Good evening. The meeting for the Carson Planning Commission is now officially called to order. Let's begin with our pledge of allegiance, and we will ask Commissioner Doc Dossel to lead us in our pledge.
All right, let us please rise. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. If you could give us our roll call.
Madam Chair, Thomas.
Here.
Vice Chair Diaz.
Here.
Commissioner Doc Dossel.
Here.
Commissioner Guerra.
President.
Commissioner Huff.
President.
Commissioner Infume.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson is not here. Commissioner Montecarlo.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda will be oral communications for matters not on the agenda. The public may at this time address the members of the Planning Commission on any matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No action may be taken on non-agendized items except as authorized by law. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to no more than three minutes each speaking once. Madam Secretary, do we have any? Do we have any speakers for oral communications for matters not on the agenda?
There are none, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Item five, oral communications for non-public hearing items listed on the agenda. For members of the public, the public may at this time address the members of the Planning Commission on any matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No action may be taken on non-agendized items except as authorized by law. Speakers are requested to limit their comments to no more than three minutes each speaking once. Madam Secretary, do we have any speakers?
There are none, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the consent calendar, approval of the minutes from our meeting held on May 13, 2025.
Madam Chair, move to approve the minutes of May 13, 2025.
Second.
It was, uh, thank you, moved by Commissioner Guerra, second by Commissioner Huff. Madam Secretary for the vote.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item that we have on the agenda is a public hearing. It is for Zone Text Amendment, ZCC number 03-25, to update and clarify onsite business signage-related code sections. The applicant, of course, is the city of Carson. Do we have a presentation on this item?
A verbal presentation. They request to extend it so that staff can gather more information, prepare for the next couple of meetings. We'll bring it back.
Okay, so the recommendation at this time is to continue the public hearing to June 24, 2025. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Thank you, and then I will call for a motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion.
We should, we should just, for the record, entertain any public comments if there is anyone for tonight, since it was noticed.
Thank you.
Then we can continue it.
Okay, so this item was noticed, and so, Madam Secretary, do we have any speakers for the public hearing?
We have none, Madam Chair.
Okay, seeing none, then at this time, are we gonna close it or just continue it? We will keep it open and continue it to the next, excellent. So the request is to continue this item until June 24, 2025. Commissioner Huff?
Yes, Madam Chair, I do motion, and we accept staff recommendation to continue the public hearing to June the 24th on this particular item.
I second that.
And if I may just request a clarification as far as time, because we do need a specified date, time, and place. So the time would be the normal meeting time, 6:30.
Normal meeting time.
Place would be here, at the Ellen Cavagoli Council Chambers.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent, move by Commissioner Huff, second by Commissioner Doc Dossel. You may call for the vote.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, so the next item we have on the agenda is a discussion for CPA Reach Codes Information Overview Presentation by Rita Colsar? Ree-, oh, okay, I just said that all wrong, and I know your name is Rita. Okay, Energy and Sustainability Officer Rita Colsar. Thank you, you have the floor.
Okay, wonderful. Good evening, Vice Chair, I mean, well, first Chair Thompson, Vice Chair Diaz, Planning Commissioners and Staff. My name is Rita Colsar. I'm the Energy and Sustainability Officer here for the city of Carson. I, I think I know a handful of you, some of you I don't know just yet, but I just wanted to share that I have been working for the city for over 15 years. Started off in planning, I moved over to engineering, and now I'm part of the Energy and Innovation Office Department. And, um, our agenda for today is an introduction on reach codes and building performance standards. And I'm gonna give the presentation, and the way we kind of set it up is, I'm gonna start, and then I'm gonna pass it over to Walker Wells, who's from Ramey &amp; Associates. But before we get into the presentation, I want to share with you who is collectively part of this endeavor to, to, to think about what it is, what reach codes are, and what we're doing at the city level. So, um, part of the team, we have folks from the Planning Division. We have Christopher Palmer, and now Makena Alexander. From our Building and Safety Team, we have Isla Jefferson. We also have with us today Jason Robbins and Dennis Chiringo. They're here for some support. And then, again, Walker from Ramey &amp; Associates. And part of the consulting team, we also have folks from TRC. We also have folks from Edison that are also part of the group that are working collectively together to, to figure out what makes sense for Carson. And, let's keep going. So Carson has been a member of the Clean Power Alliance since 2017. We are one of 37 member agencies. And CPA, through this endeavor, has hired a team of consultants to support member agencies. Again, Carson is one of 37 member agencies, and there's cities within LA County, and also cities within Ventura County that are part of the Clean Power Alliance. And so they are funding this effort. The value of all the consulting, consulting services that we're receiving is roughly just under $40,000. The city's not paying any, any funds upfront to any of the consultants, but the consultants are hired through the Clean Power Alliance, and they are providing the service to us at, again, at no cost. And it's really to help cities understand and identify reach codes opportunities for both new construction and existing buildings, and to provide technical assistance and support, support including researching relevant policies, answering technical questions, educating stakeholders, and presenting at meetings. And I will say that there, there are a lot of slides in the slide deck today. We're not gonna get through all of them at the end of the slide deck, which I'm sure staff will share with all of you. There's an appendix, there's a lot of really great information about reach codes and different things that Carson could, could implement, but it's really just to provide some back, some background information. And this is a, just a rough timeline of, of where we are. Today, we're giving the presentation to the, to the Planning Commission. Two weeks ago, we actually gave a presentation to the Environmental Commission. And then, prior to that, this item went before the City Council, and the City Council did authorize the staff to move forward with participating in this program with the Clean Power Alliance. And this happened, I think, in March, at the, one of the March City Council meetings. And so this is gonna kind of share with you the overall timeline of the project. Again, right now, we're in the policy review and introductory area. We're also looking at the city's building stock. And then, and then as we progress through the months, we'll move into code development, continue to do stakeholder engagement, analysis, and additional presentations will be on this item. Okay, and with that, I'm going to ask Walker to come up. He, again, is with Ramey &amp; Associates, and he is the technical lead on the subject. And there's a handful of slides which he's gonna get into and kind of just elaborate a little bit more. Okay? And then you can just push this.
Great. Thanks. Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thanks. Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to share some about these topics that are very important to me, how we use energy, how we use it efficiently, how we can be leaders in really shifting to the use of clean electricity, so.
Can you give me your full name, please?
I certainly can. My name's Walker Wells.
Walker Wells.
Walker Wells.
All right.
With Ramey Associates. And we're part of the team that's helping you, as, as you heard, all funded by Clean Power Alliance, who, again, is your electricity provider. And my job tonight is to share with you some of the reason for these reach codes, why we're, look at them in the first place, and then different options that are out there for how Carson may want to pursue one of these reach codes. They're called reach codes because it's, it's really about reaching into the future and looking at what the energy standards, or how we use energy would look, you know, usually about three years into the future. So we're kind of reaching into the next code cycle. Building code gets updated every three years. So that's, that's where this, this sort of funny term can come from. Okay. All right, so just a little bit of background. In the state of California, we have a building code, and it is locally adopted, for the most part, across the state. There's two pieces to it, two parts that are really important for us to think about. And so that's Part Six and Part 11. Part Six is the Energy Code, and then Part 11 is the Green Building Code. There's other parts, there's a fire code, an elevator code, a plumbing code, all these other ones, but it's really Part Six and then Part 11. And as I mentioned, they get updated on a three-year cycle. And the, the new code, the 2025 code, will go into effect on January 1st of 2026. So local governments are adopting this updated code, the 2025 code, and they're looking at options that make sense locally to augment that code by having more stringent requirements or encouraging different types of development. So we're in a moment here when updating the code makes sense, because, you know, in whatever it is, seven, eight months, we have an opportunity to make those adjustments and have them go into effect potentially on the 1st of January, maybe later than that, if that's more appropriate. Okay, so there's a couple of different types. There's really the ones that look at buildings and the ones that look, look at cars. And so they enhance the state's standards to encourage the use of electric, electricity for powering things. So powering your home, all-electric design, or electric cars, which we're all pretty familiar with. And so we, the way that these standards get implemented is through the building code, sometimes through the zoning ordinance with your parking standards. So you may ask, you may decide to ask for a higher number of EV charging, fully wired EV charging parking spaces than the code minimum. Or you may ask that, you know, houses are more efficient than baseline code. There's a couple of different ways to do this. There's a prescriptive way, which is where you give people a checklist. You go, here's the list, you know, you have, either have to do everything, or you have to pick five things out of 10. But we're prescribing, we're saying, an electric heat pump for heating and cooling, an electric dryer, an electric stove. Or there's this performance where you just say, save energy, you know, or reduce your greenhouse gas emissions. So, and then you figure it out. So you'd say, we want a 10% or 20% reduction, it's up to you. Here's your choices, and that can be modeled. And then a couple of ways to implement these are mandatory, through adjustments to the building code or the zoning ordinance, as I mentioned. And then there's voluntary methods, which basically is what's going on right now. Anyone can choose to go, you know, make these choices. But a lot of the cities that choose a more voluntary path make a commitment to providing enhanced information about rebates, doing, you know, Earth Day fairs that get the information out there, so people can make the most of the rebates provided by the state through Edison or the gas company, or through Clean Power Alliance. So this is something to think about already. You know, what's a better fit for Carson? Is it a prescriptive approach, a performance approach? You know, should some things be mandated? Should other things be voluntary but incentivized? This is really the kind of moving parts in this whole undertaking. Why are we bothering with this in the first place? Well, if you're in Clean Power Alliance service area, you have access to clean electricity, 100% renewable electricity, if that's what you choose to do. So then you can start to say, well, if it's 100% clean, and I want to, you know, not have combustion gases in my home from burning gas, and I don't want benzene, I don't want formaldehyde or carbon monoxide, and I can get clean electricity, maybe I should be thinking about decarbonizing my home, or future buildings, or electrifying those buildings, because then we don't have any of those combustion gases, no health issues, we're not leaking methane, you know, into, into the home. These are important things for grownups, but they're even more important things for kids. Basically, they're smaller, their metabolism runs faster, so all of, any environmental toxin that they breathe in has a magnified effect on them. So these are some of the reasons why you would want to switch to clean electrical appliances and building systems. If it's uncomprehensively, we can save some money on new construction. You don't have to pull in gas lines as well as electrical lines. If your house is energy efficient and electric, you can end up saving some money on your bill. The things that resonate the most for me, improved indoor air quality, reduce the risk of combustion by fire. So if you don't have anything that's catching on fire, a furnace, a water heater, a stove, it's burning, you've just reduced your fire risk in your house, which, you know, I think makes me feel a little more secure. And then, because I'm a longtime environmentalist, this reduction in greenhouse gas emissions is, you know, that resonates for me, is sort of being, you know, making a small contribution to this larger global issue of climate change. Few more reason to, reasons to look at these decarbonization policies. The state is moving the ball, updating their standards, which is sort of directing people more in an electric direction. So are the air quality management districts, both in the Bay Area and in our air district, the South Coast Air Quality Management District, have said that they're going to either restrict the purchase of combustion appliances in the future, or require people who make appliances to sell a certain percentage of non-combustion appliances. This is talked about in 2030, 2032, these types of dates. What you do locally can influence the state, so you could say, this is what Carson felt was a good fit for us, and that is gonna influence what the state looks at in future code iterations. You can speed up action, you can, you help send a signal to the market that, yes, they should make electric appliances, and then you get to decide. So there's an issue of local control. And that's, I think, a good part about this program is Clean Power Alliance, you know, allows me and my other team members to work individually with each city to come up with a bespoke or tailored approach. So I'm not here to say, here's my thing, sign on to it. We're here to say, let's talk to each other and see what could be a good fit for you around this particular topic. Now I'm gonna show you how these things work. Okay, so the, the first one I'm, I'll go through is called a Building Performance Standard. It's a lot of jargony words. What it's saying is that buildings are given a standard that they need to adhere to for energy use or greenhouse gas emissions per year. So there's a defined destination. It's not 20% less or 10% improvement. Say, here is our standard, and it can be, um, millions of British thermal units, BTUs, per square foot per year, or greenhouse gas emissions per square foot per year. And you figure out what that number is through a number of steps. But what's good about the Building Performance Standard approach is that it focuses on the larger buildings that use the most amount of energy and are probably the most sophisticated in their operations and ownership. And so often, by touching maybe 5% of the buildings in your community, we can get to 50% or more of the energy that's used in your community. And then those buildings are given a target that they need to get to in three or five years. It's pretty elegant, and it results in real reductions and, and significant action. This graph shows, just illustrates in concept how Building Performance Standards work. So you can see different buildings could start at different places. You know, say, yeah, sort of energy use per year. So you see Building A uses a lot more energy than Building B and Building C. Each of them needs to reduce their energy use by a certain percent, by that interim step, and then another percent by the, the second interim step. And then they all need to get to the same destination at some point in time, which ideally is zero emissions by, say, 2040 or 2045. This slide has a lot of information on it, but it is about Carson, so it's, it's of interest. What it's showing is that you have a good number of buildings on the left that are over 100,000 square feet, which means there's big buildings that are, makes a Building Performance Standard worth bothering with. And then you have a good number of buildings also that are quite small, I think it's under 5,000 square feet. What, in those under 5,000 square feet, you know, probably single-family homes, small apartment buildings. With the Building Performance Standards, you can let the mom and pops keep doing their thing, they're small, they're using a little bit of energy, a small amount of energy, and focus our attention over on the left side of the graph, that really is the larger buildings. And we may look at 100,000 above, buildings that are 50,000 square feet and above already need to report to the state, and you can just slide it down there from, you know, 50 to 40, et cetera, you can see those steps down. There's a lot of data on here. The main point is you do have a significant number of buildings that are large, and therefore, you know, make it really worth it to work with them to reduce their energy use. So that's the basics of Building Performance Standard. And then I'm gonna talk about reach codes and some of the options and the mechanics of them. No one's asking you to choose tonight. This is just to inform everybody about the choices. So, uh, for new buildings, the approach that's often taken is with this performance approach, where you say, new construction needs to be 5% more energy efficient than the California Energy Code Minimum. And, again, it's performance, people can say, I want to have an efficient hot water heater or an efficient furnace, or I want to upgrade my windows, or, all of these options are in the software, and people can decide the best fit for them. They're pretty straightforward. And then this, on the right, what we're seeing are, are some of the emerging approaches that are coming up that I already talked about. The air quality management districts are talking about restricting the sale of combustion appliances, because when they combust natural gas or methane, oxides of nitrogen are a byproduct. And oxides of nitrogen, NOx, goes out into the atmosphere, reacts with sunlight, and becomes smog. And so they're concerned about it actually when it goes outside of the house. But we're able to say, well, if it's inside the house making the combustion, and the flue goes outside, it gets out there, and we have a NOx problem. And our air basin is in non-attainment, which means it's not supposed to take any more oxides of nitrogen, or NOx, as it's called. So that's happening, but it's a newer thing. There's a long history of this energy approach of asking for a percentage better than Title That's new. Then for existing buildings, I either have to crane my head or not see the slides, because I have the wrong glasses on. Okay, here we go. So some approaches for existing buildings are pretty straightforward, just, it's a replacement of one item for the other. So, um, these are approved at the state level. It's been proven to be cost-effective and technically feasible, is just going from a gas-water heater to a heat pump-water heater, that's that HPWH. So that's one option, or going from just an air conditioning unit to a heat pump, which is just a more efficient version of an air conditioning unit that also makes heat. So you get one box that makes hot and cold, and then it's, it's more efficient than the things that, you know, we were putting up in the 70s and 80s. So that's pretty straightforward. Can be implemented over the counter, you're coming, you're replacing your water heater, you have to do electric water heater, you're replacing your AC, you need to do a heat pump. We have electric readiness, which is just asking people to put in the circuits in their panel and the outlets, or the box, basically, with the 220 in it, so that in the future, they can plug in the electric hot water heater, or plug in the electric induction stove, or plug in the, the heat pump, or plug in the car. And so when people renovate, we may say, you don't have to do anything, buy any appliances, but you do need to get ready for electrification. And then we have this FlexPath approach, which gives you different options on a list that you can choose from. Slide just talks about some of the cost-effectiveness, and that, you know, if done correctly and thought through, you can save some money. This is largely for new home construction, and I think for sort of larger tract home developments, but it reinforces what we've learned, that these electric appliances and systems are cost-effective. There's analysis that has to be done at the state level to get that cost-effectiveness This just shows a little bit more about the potential savings that could happen. I think the savings is in green, the cost is in, is in red. So you're seeing, if, in the middle bar there, I don't think I have a pointer, but the one that has two greens, saying if you have an all-electric building with photovoltaic, you're gonna potentially save on construction costs and be able to save, you know, $20 a month or so. Basically, that there's an economic rationale behind this, if you plan ahead. Then here's just an overview, and I'll wrap up by talking about the FlexPath structure. So we've talked about energy performance for new construction, talked a little bit about air quality and the Air Quality Management District rules, we've talked about EV infrastructure. On existing buildings, replacing the air conditioning with the heat pump air conditioner, or the water heater with the heat pump water heater, I'll talk about FlexPath. We've touched on readiness, and that's enough for that slide? I don't think, I feel like we missed our FlexPath slide, did we miss that? Okay, well, I'll just describe it. So here's, this, I don't know if this will go backwards for me? Yeah, okay, so you see, on the existing building approaches, there's this FlexPath approach. And what it is, is a list of about 10 items, each of which have different points associated with them, based on how much energy you save. Each point is equivalent to a million BTUs of saved energy. And it could be, insulate the ducts in your attic, replace your windows, add insulation in your walls, change out your air conditioner to a heat pump version, change out your water heater to a heat pump version, add insulation in the, you know, underneath your home, so you don't have cold or hot air coming in. And it gives you a list of items, and you have to be able to have enough things on the list that are cost-effective, so people could just pick cost-effective items. We also have to have items on the list that are not regulated by the federal government, because you may have heard about this Berkeley decision that banned electrification of buildings. So we have to be able to say, well, the federal government has the right to regulate water heaters, but they don't regulate insulation. They can regulate air conditioners, appliances, but they don't regulate windows. And so there has to be a pathway that gets you around the federal preemption and is also cost-effective. And then you can add all kinds of other things that you think are interesting and useful that are locally relevant. I don't, improved, you could have improved air filtration on there if you wanted to, and people could pick that, you know, if that's, that's sort of a concern. And, and then I'm excited about this FlexPath approach, because we've been evolving it for a couple of cities, and I think it's elegant, it touches on all of the things, that it's locally relevant, it avoids the federal problems, it's cost-effective, it gives people choices, and I think it can be quite simple to implement at the counter. So a long time ago, I was a municipal urban planner, and I worked at the counter, and, you know, so I have some experience of, like, making things simple in permit processing and not adding on a lot of additional, uh, steps. Okay. And then a few more slides. So we did a little bit of outreach at Earth Day, and a little bit came in after that. So here's the results of the survey that was done. Most people live or work in Carson. 60% were homeowners, 26% renters, and then the people who were interested in this seem to be in my cohort, 55-plus. Are people feeling informed about the climate effects on their community? The answer was not at all. 70% said that they were not that inclined and informed, but they also felt moderately bold about being active in reducing emissions in the city. People leaned towards a voluntary approach, or voluntary and mixed, maybe some things are mandated. And then the majority of people knew that they could opt into 100% renewable energy in this, in Carson. The two items that people were most familiar with, not surprisingly, are light bulbs and probably LED, or appliance replacements. Some of these other things may seem a little more exotic, an energy audit, or insulation. And then these are the ranked options of most popular. Require new homes and businesses to install efficient appliances to save energy and water, probably when they're doing a renovation. Provide financial incentives, or direct people to the financial incentives to support the conversion. Provide financial incentives or direct people to the financial incentives to support the conversion away from gas to electricity. Uh, promote the incentives provided by the utilities. Ask people to get just an evaluation of their electrical service. So in my, in my little house, we have a 50 amp panel, which is small. So sort of a normal electrical panel might be 100, a new one would be 200. So I'm out of circuits. Like I would like to do some more electrification. I don't have any more slots. Um, I didn't know that until I had already decided to do some electrification stuff. And I'm looking at electric dryers and air conditioners. And then I have an electrician come out and he's like, you got to upgrade your service and we got to underground this thing. And here's, I was like, whoa, okay. Maybe I'll spend $5,000 somewhere else. Um, but it's still good for me to know because maybe there's a moment when that all makes sense. You know, I am doing a bigger renovation. Um, so this is something that's just educating people, um, not necessarily making them make a big investment. It's evaluation of electric electrical service and then phasing in some requirement to convert the gas appliances to be all electric um at some point in the future. So these are things people are interested in. Um, and I think this may be the last slide. Um, they identified that the not surprising cost is a major concern for everyone, I think. And then um not enough information either about the cost or the implications, how to do it. Um, other concerns that do come up around electrification is finding qualified contractors who are familiar with these systems. It's getting easier and easier all the time as they become less exotic and more commonplace. There we go. Okay, thank you. Open for any questions, discussion. Appreciate the time.
Commissioners? Well, I am very excited.
Great.
I have been about this for a long time, very long time. I was in original meetings about CPA years before the county LA Carson decided we were going to go CPA. I was one of those people out there protesting. I have two electric cars. I had a slot to extend so that I can plug in right in my garage. Have a tankless water heater.
Excellent. Well, thank, thank you.
Yeah, and I get these letters from S C E saying even the most efficient houses, I'm below them in electric hu- usage. I am very excited. I think it's something that we uh, I'm happy that we're finally really all in in pursuing this. I love the E V chargers, even though I don't need them because I have my own. But I'm saying we need to have them in the city. And Rita has been around for a long time. So she knows I have been very much interested in getting this done. Um, I like the the fact that we have solar panels on some of our city buildings uh that help. So we are moving in that direction and I think that is very exciting. I get excited about it. I do. But there was a time when I drove a Land Rover and I was going to CPA meetings. And I was the only one that had a gas guzzler. So I was embarrassed, but no more, no more. It's all about the electric car. That's a personal opinion and I stand by it. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a quick question.
Yes.
Oh, all right. This is maybe a bit of a prompt for all of you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, um, I'm sorry about stop stopping your process. But um you you mentioned, I believe I heard you correctly, that the cost effectiveness determination has yet been determined. Um, and and I asked because I owned a couple of houses in Fort Worth and it was all electric. And so I boldly said I would pay the electric bill for my tenants. And some of them were $350 to $500. So do you, do you have an idea when you will be able to provide a a cost effectiveness determination by any chance?
I mean, my understanding is that that work is being done now and it'll be available in um third quarter of this year. So some, you know, in the fall. And they go through sort of cost effectiveness of high performance windows, cost effectiveness of additional insulation of.
Wow.
Like they look at each of these things that people can do to improve their energy efficiency. And um, and just to, you know, explain all, the cost effectiveness determination is how it works like this. The additional costs that you pay, the additional costs that you pay needs to be returned to you over the life of the product. So it doesn't say it's a moneymaker. You're going to get 10% return on investment. It just says if a normal water, normal gas water heater costs, I don't know what it costs. Say $1,000 in a tankless, sorry, a heat pump hot water heater costs $1,500 that you're supposed to get the $500 delta back over the life of the the equipment.
Oh, thank you very much.
Okay.
I'm complete, Madam Chair. Thank you, sir.
I also have efficient windows, all of that.
You've been all in.
And you do get it back over, it it pays for itself. That's the bottom line. You pay for it, but it pays for itself in the savings that you have over time. I think that's where the cost effectiveness comes in. And it uh continues to create a clean environment, not only in your home, but it helps the environment, period.
Yeah.
You should give me a commission. I can sell this. I need a commission. No, I'm kidding. Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, Rita reminded me that we did put together a few sort of questions that might be a prompt for discussion. Um, just your chance to glance at those.
Okay, all right. So when you, are you getting these kinds of questions? If I may just be informal for a minute, Rita, are you getting these kinds of questions when you're doing presentations?
So we um, we put together a survey and we presented it at the Environmental Commission. And then there probably like two or three weeks ago, Vice Chair Diaz was at a community health fair. Um, and so we also brought that same survey to that health fair and we received, I don't know, about 12 to 15 responses. So the 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 results that you you saw today are just from Earth Day. Um, we're still working on updating those slides to incorporate the recent um survey responses that we got. So we'll we'll update all of those together. And this, you know, this set of questions that you see on the slide deck right now is just to, you know, get everyone's minds kind of thinking about these things. Again, there's no action needed today. We just wanted to get this content in front of you. We wanted to give you all an opportunity to to look at it, read it, hear from Walker. Um, um, and with the understanding that sometime next year, this time next year, hopefully we'll have something that we can present as a final product. But we have a good 12 months to get there. And this is just the first introductory introduction of this topic for for those that may not have known about it previously.
And with the number of warehouses that we have here in Carson, I noticed on your chart, the usage was way up for warehouses. And so, yeah, it uh, it's certainly something we have to be cognizant of because we have a lot of warehouses.
And I can just add on the building performance standard. One of the things that we're doing now, if you remember the the timeline chart, is doing that building stock analysis to figure out how many buildings we have in each kind of grouping. Um, so when we start thinking about what kind of policies may work and how much uh greenhouse gas emission reductions we may receive, it's nice to be able to toggle those switches. Like if we ta- if we targeted buildings that were 30,000 square foot or larger, how much emission savings would we see? What if we changed that number of buildings that were 40,000 square foot or more? You know, where would we, where would we end up? So those are the questions we're going to be asking the technical team to kind of analyze and look at and then sharing the 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 results of that with, you know, the 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 parties.
Excellent, excellent. Any other questions for my colleagues? Seeing none.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're at a point in our uh meeting where we're looking for the manager's report. Do we have a report tonight?
Well, good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair and entire commission. My name is Dr. Robert Lennox. I'm the Assistant City Manager for the City of Carson. I'm joining you uh for the first time, I think, uh, just to uh help fill in a bit. Uh, there's been some changes in leadership in the city. Uh, and the city manager's office felt uh it was a probably past time to ensure that there was executive uh present during commission meetings and to provide additional support uh to our management staff from the uh planning side. So um I'm here to do that and also just to relay uh some information that the community development uh director position is in recruitment. Uh, and so you're stuck with me for a little bit. Uh, but once that's concluded, uh, you will have a director uh up here at the dais uh with the team uh presenting all items related to the commission. So until then, you're stuck with me.
Welcome, and we love being stuck.
Sure, and I'm guessing managers may have some updates too, but.
Thank you.
Oh, and I I did want to also provide uh just to, there's been some other shifts as well um in the team. So for the moment, uh McKenna Alexander, uh who's uh one of the planning staff has now assumed the role as the acting planning manager uh during this time period. And then also Christopher Palmer is our uh acting economic development manager. So that's their new capacities.
Congratulations to you both. Yes, thank you.
Madam Chair, those two are permanent.
He said interim. Did you hear that part? Intra?
Acting at the moment.
Acting.
Thank you.
Yes.
I didn't get that title, but Mr. Palmer.
Acting Economic Development Manager.
How long you going?
You won't get rid of me that easy.
We don't.
In other words, he's not going anywhere. Okay, all right. Commissioners Oral Communications, we'll start with Commissioner Doc Dassel.
While it's always a privilege to be part of these meetings, it's also nice when we get stuff done at a reasonable hour. But in in terms of what we do here, I it's obviously, you know, there's a lot of appreciation for all the work that that's that happens before the actual meeting. So hats off as always to the staff uh for preparing everything, um, you know, for a smooth uh commission meeting. And certainly it's all my fellow commissioners for showing up and, you know, doing our part for, you know, the jewel of the South Bay. Uh, but yeah, always excited to at to get to this uh future unlimited that, you know, that we're all striving for. That completes me. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hough.
Good evening to everybody. Mine are quite short. I would just say ditto, even a short meeting. We seem to have accomplished an awful lot. The presentation was really good and I am really delighted to hear that um part of our support team here has moved up to an acting, I guess you would say, that position. But they have been doing a fantastic job. Everybody here has. And so I'm really happy about that and glad to make your acquaintance in our formal setting or whatever. And everybody have a wonderful rest of the week.
Thank you, Commissioner Guerra.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I I would like to say that I'm extremely grateful uh about our planning staff. They're amazing. Uh, I was in Carson when we used to walk by cows. It was, it it was undeveloped. I've been here 55 years, raised my family. Now my daughter lives here in a home that I purchased for her. So I'm excited about everything you do. Uh, but I I do have a question, if I may, um, since we have the big, big dog here. Um, thank you for attending. But I'm kind of concerned uh about Spectrum um installing cables at our residence. And apparently they don't have permits and or inspection. And I say that to say this, they drilled the hole through my brand new roof about 20 years ago. And during a recent rainstorm last year, it leaked and now I have to sue them. Despite the fact that they said it shouldn't have been done that way. Why aren't we pursuing permits uh from Spectrum to drill holes through our roofs and and walls, etc., when we have requirements for permits when we change our toilet? So that that's my concern. What what can we do about that uh so we can have an inspection and a permit? And I'm complete. Maybe you have something to add to that.
Not a lot, but Commissioner Guerra, I think if there are some unauthorized activities at a property, a private residence, then uh yes, definitely city staff should know so that if at very least, we can see if Spectrum has permits pulled for that type of activity. Um, not every type of improvement will require a permit, but uh depending on what it is, if we know about it, we can follow up. So maybe offline, we can get a better idea of what the what the scope is, uh, and then we can follow up accordingly.
I would cer- I would certainly appreciate that. And I'm complete. Thank you, sir.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Monteclella.
Yeah, uh, so good evening, everybody. Um, like the Madam Chair, I was uh also excited initially about the CPA uh presentation and what it can do. Um, I said initially I was excited because lately I had some uh home expenses that I should have not done had I known this CPA. Because I got a new uh gas range and a new gas water heater. Spent a lot of money for that. So it's, this presentation should have done a week earlier. But anyhow, it's nice to be here. And uh, you know, I look forward to the presentation in its finality and execution. And I think uh if it will be done well, it will uh inure to the benefit of uh City of Carson and its residents as we uh go forward and work for the um always the public health, safety and uh uh public welfare of our residents. I'm complete, Madam Chair.
Thank you. You should have called me first. Commissioner Johnson.
Um, thank you. Grateful to be here, grateful to participate as always. Um, CPA presentation was extremely insightful. I considered commenting, but um like Mr. Montic, Commissioner Monteclella, I have a few resignations, just making sure we execute in a responsible manner where, you know, people aren't pulling that permit to replace their toilet and, you know, they're forced to replace their water heater. And, you know, it turns into a a snowball even looking at, looking at some of the progressive requirements. It's like, what happens if we're at the end and you're not at the end? But um I think it can be executed in a responsible manner and fully considering people that have newer appliances or don't have the funds to execute. But I'm just happy to be here, happy to participate and looks forward to uh, look forward to the next.
Thank you, Commissioner Pume.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um, welcome aboard. Uh, uh, changes, different. Um, wasn't expecting to hear these changes, so welcome aboard. And I'm gonna, are you gonna be around? I know you will, but I'm gonna miss with that new title. What does that move you to?
I'm still in community development. I'll I'll definitely be in support of the planning commission.
Not planning, okay.
I I'll I'll be here to support the commission.
Okay.
Yeah, he's still here. He's not going anywhere.
Okay, well, he did say that, but uh.
Yeah, he trying to say it all nice and stuff. He's not going anywhere.
But anyway, um, thank you. Um, it's good to see uh the commissioners. It's always good to see you. But I did have one concern. I know that with the program, uh, they're talking about the new, oh, sorry, the new buildings coming up. I can understand it's this, it's been implemented for those, but for the homes, uh, single family homes. I just remember when um the solar panels, when people were, I guess, contractors, they were canvassing the areas, these homes, and they were uh putting in solar panels. But I don't know if they were really qualified to do them. So is there any, is there going to be any policing for that? So is there any, is there gonna be any policing for that? Or people can just come knock on your door and say they are offering these products?
No, that, that should not occur. What's happening is we're, we're discussing this so that it could be at the, the building code level. So we're, we're doing all this ahead of time so that when we decide which approach is best for Carson, it'll be implemented through the municipal code. And so that's how we'll execute.
Okay, thank you. I'm complete.
Thank you. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no report this evening, but the presentation was eye opening and it's long overdue. The health fair that was, was held two weeks ago was successful. And it was wonderful to have a city involved with that, city staff. And that's always a plus. So I just encourage us moving forward as we're doing. So thank you very much. I'm complete.
Thank you. Let's not forget the portion of his presentation that said, there's a checklist and then there's you decide what part you want to upgrade. It's not a mandated thing that you're gonna be forced to do in your home. It will happen over time. As was mentioned about appliances, I, I don't know. A lot of people get their electric bill, their gas bill, they get all these bills. They don't read the inserts. I'm an insert reader. There are so many programs, rebates and all of this to upgrade your appliances so that you don't have to bear the full ex. I, I've been doing this a long time. So there are just, there's money out there to help people who want to upgrade their home in whatever way they want to get it done. You're not gonna be forced to put solar panels on your house. A lot of people want solar panels. It was not cost effective for me to do it. Because I had so many other things happening until my bill, I won't tell you how much it is. It's very low. But nevertheless, so it's, 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 you know, I don't have a $500 a month electric bill. You understand what I'm saying? But for some people, it was advantageous for them to get the solar panels because then it was reduced to maybe $300 as opposed to five. But you have to do your homework. You have to do your research. And I'm saying that for those people who may be watching this meeting. It's not gonna happen overnight. This has been going on for a number of years, a lot of years. So take your time. Take your time, decide what you're gonna do with your home. And just know that you need to make decisions that will benefit you. It's just like the car you drive. If you want a gasoline car, and a lot of people just bought a gasoline car in spite of the fact that California is trying to say by 2035, you should not have a gasoline car. But you know, it, all these things are happening. But you make your decision. Don't feel like you are being coerced. Don't feel like you're being forced or any of that. It will be your decision. So think of it that way. Now, Juneteenth, 14th of June. We're only a few weeks away. Everything is, everything is in motion. New location just for this year. It will not be at Mills Park. It will be at Anderson Park. Anderson Park is located at 19101 Wilmington Avenue. It's the corner of University and Wilmington, south of the 91 freeway. It will begin at 11:00. It will end 6ish. No patrons will be allowed. No attendees will be allowed on the park before 10:30. You will not be barbecuing out there. Don't bring your pets just because you like to have your pets. Now, if it's a, if it's a service animal, that's one thing. But it really isn't a good environment for your little dogs. And I love dogs and they are adorable. But I leave mine at home every year, you know? So put it on your calendar if you haven't already. And let me emphasize this. This is the Juneteenth celebration. It is not the Jazz Festival. There will be no cabanas. There will be no VIP section. This is Juneteenth. Now, Jazz Festival, October 4th, first Saturday in October. There will be cabanas, there will be VIP sections and all of that. But not at Juneteenth. We've gotten so many calls asking that. And even staff here at City Hall, they've gotten calls. So spread that word around, put it on your calendar. There will be a tribute to Frankie Beverly and Mays, whom we lost last year. It is going to be good. You don't wanna miss it. So come one, come all, family atmosphere, fun zone is gonna be themed Jumanji. It's gonna be good. And we will also have a Black History Museum with artifacts from the past. So you don't wanna miss it, vendors. It's free. Did I say that? It's free. That should have been the first thing I said. Carson still does it for free and we do it better than anybody else. So tell your friends, tell your neighbors, bring your family. I look forward to seeing everyone. And if there's nothing further, all together now. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Very good.